Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, June 5th, 2024. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website. And for those joining us at the table, please do not turn your microphones off. Our first order of business is roll call. The clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharlin.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith. Ms. Warwick. Mr. Wilson. Ms. Jossberger, Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. We have no registered speakers, so those wishing to speak can approach the podium.
Good morning. Hello. My name is Michael Bonneywell, Pittsburgh resident. So today, I'd like to speak about the corruption here in the city of Pittsburgh. My friend, Dr. Miller, has requested a formal investigation on Ed Gannon, all the misprocreated funds and corruption, malfeasance, and all the other things that affects every single taxpayer here in this city. His formal request was set and denied because they did not have jurisdiction. And my friends, there's $40 million worth of money, procreated funds on the ark that aren't going to the right place. I mean, we need to fix this city. I mean, I don't really understand what or why you would have no jurisdiction to be investigated. Where's the accountability? And I'd like to know that, you know, every taxpayer is going to know, and there will be justice, there will be an investigation, and there will be justice, but tick-tock, tick-tock, the whole world is watching. I want to make America great again, and we're going to investigate this, elect out the bad actors, and we are going to... You're not going to be able to lead with righteousness, then we're going to lock you up. I have made a mockery... You guys have made a mockery out of our democracy, and I just want to leave with that. Like, this city is broken. I pushed a lady in a wheelchair the other day because she's been trying to get an electric wheelchair for three years. I mean, come on, man. Like, I don't understand this. What is going on with this city? You guys are not helping the poor. You guys are giving more to law enforcement. I mean, I get it, we need police, we can't have police, but like, we need to fix these problems, and we should do it all as a community. Every voice matters, every person matters. And I just wanted to leave with this, where we go one, we go all. All right.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's at the top of Beaufort, where you see that senior high-rise. There's 190 apartments in that building. It was originated by Kaylee Rivas. I'm a little mixed up today, but anyway, I was listening to 90.5 FM, WESA, and they're having a fundraiser for citizens. And at that time, it was dollar for dollar. If you pledged a dollar, another dollar would be added. And the reason why I keep saying about WESA, they have really brought forth a lot of information that we would not even know about. I started listening years ago when Trayvon was killed down south. It was on... I just happened to turn that radio station, and I heard them. They said, "Young person killed by..." And you heard, "Help!" And I said, "That's Trayvon." I thought I heard his voice. But they said, "Young man." And here in the United States, they had suspect. Automatic made that young boy, 13-years-old, a suspect. Okay, so congratulations again to WESA staff, where at least five awards were given to them because they are the best. Even the Edward R. Moore, I remember him from years ago. There's an award that they have, they won that. So I'm kind of... I'm up in age, and so I remember some of these people. Also, the golf building. I have a little grand, great-grandbaby that's three-years-old. Yesterday, she came to the house, and I had my windows open, and the golf building was lit in the other buildings, and her little eyes, she went to the door, she was saying, "Oh." So when I tell you about how those lights lift up your spirit, anytime it lifts up the little baby, she couldn't believe it. Also, I wanted to understand... You understand, when I come down here, I come down because people send me. Now, up where I live at, there's a gas station. In the wintertime, there's no cars, and I asked the man, I went to him, I said, "Sometime I see you got two or 300 cars, but when it snows, they don't come up here and clean the snow." And he said to me, he said, "Oh, yes, they do, but they do it on their time." Now, those people would park their cars at six o'clock in the morning, they can park their cars. There might be five, and there might be two or 300 cars that they could put in there. Now, I said to him, "Do you think I should go down there and tell the City Council?" And he told me, "Yes." When I come down, I come down because the people tell me to tell you, and I come down because you cannot know if you don't come to our community. If you don't come to our community, if you make a decision like Ms. Gross stated, we decided to take him to Lawrenceville.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. There being no further speakers, we will now move on to our Standing Committee's agenda. Our first committee is the Finance and Law Committee chaired by myself.
Bill 527, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Lamar Advertising in an Amount Not to Exceed $24,247.15 Over One Year in Full and Final Settlement of a Claim for Damage to Lamar Billboard Number 3086 from a City Emergency Services Recycling Vehicle on September 19, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 527, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Bill 528.
Bill 528, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Omar Weece Keese in an Amount Not to Exceed $3,272.47 Over One Year in Full and Final Settlement of a Claim for Damage to his Park Vehicle from a City Emergency Services Vehicle on June 23, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 528, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Bill 529.
Bill 529, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Sedgwick as TPA for Trinity Health in an Amount Not to Exceed $3,484.66 Over One Year in Full and Final Settlement of a Claim for Damage to a Vehicle from an Accident with the City Department of Public Works Vehicle on March 9, 2023.
Second.
Discussion?
Just briefly, I just want to say thank you for the Law Department. They gave members a briefing on this yesterday, and just want to thank them for their time. And thank council leadership for making sure that those are happening. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 529, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation.
Madam Chair, let me read 540 and 541 together for companions.
Certainly. Bill, read them together.
Bill 540, Resolution Amending Resolution 911 of 2023, which re-appropriated federal American Rescue Plan funding by updating the approved projects as outlined in Exhibit A, Virgin 7. And Bill Number 541, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director, Office of Management and Budget, to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Poise Foundation in connection with services for a 2024 Juneteenth celebration for the sum of $125,000 over one year and for the payment of the cost thereof.
Motion to approve. Brief discussion?
Second. Brief discussion, Council President.
Yes, thank you. So Bill 5... Excuse me. Bill 541 allows council to follow through on our original intent from 2023, which was to provide $125,000 per year. Bill 540 simply shows us amending the ARPA line items to show we're pulling 125 from funding from the arts, but we're backfilling it with $125,000 from the wastewater lateral line item because those dollars cannot be expended.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Gross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, for seeing this through and making sure that we have the legal backup to do this. And I just wanted to also give a shout-out to my staff who got the results from the... or information from the Pennsylvania Association for Nonprofit Organizations. I cited it at the table two weeks ago, I think, or maybe it was but a week ago, that... No, it would have been two weeks ago, that there are two ways that... Again, this is specifically the way cities in Pennsylvania can give ARPA funds to all kinds of nonprofit organizations, whether those organizations were negatively impacted by the pandemic, or as a sub-recipient in order to do work for the city that the city wishes to be done. So I'm glad that it was able to work out in this instance. And as we... As I said when we initially discussed the funding for the Juneteenth festivals, I was happy to support the city starting its own, but also see that there's a clear call to action to support the Poise Foundation and the Juneteenth celebration that's been ongoing for so many years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Mosley.
Yeah, I just want to thank Council President Lavelle for, you know, his creativity and leadership in, you know, finding, you know, a solution to this so that we can, you know, really, you know, return the focus, you know, of this month back to the Juneteenth celebration. I want to thank Budget Director Peter McDevitt as well, you know, for his assistance in making this happen. So, thank you, Council President.
Any further discussion? Councilperson Warwick, followed by Councilman Sharlin.
I guess for me, I have more of just a question. Is there... Just around like how this money... Just for the public, like how this money can be spent? Or is it just a jet... You know? Yeah, Council President, if you want... Yeah, sure. Oh, sorry, interrogatory or...
Sure. So I know with the first round of expenses, Poise had to submit invoices to the city, and they then... The city, with the assistance of Mar Duzel, who is on council for us to make sure that all our expenditures of ARPA funds are done appropriately, would review each invoice to make sure it lines up with what ARPA said could be used for those expenditures.
And then reimbursed?
Yes.
And reimbursed? Okay. Okay. And so is it specifically going to go to artists, or is it just for just general festival activity?
It's majority... I believe the majority of it is indeed for artists, but there are a number of different line items. I don't want to quote exactly all the various line items that ARPA said you can use these dollars for, but I believe in the first round, the majority of it went for artists.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilwoman Sharlin.
I just want to really echo Councilman Mosley's sentiments here and thank Council President Lavelle for finding a way to act swiftly that we can get this money to the right folks here and allow this to be the cause for celebration it should be and not the saga and drama that it has been, and making sure that this is fully funded. And I just really want to thank you, Council President, for being able to find some creativity to get this done. So, thank you.
Any further first round? Councilman Coghill.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to thank Councilwoman Gross for really bringing the idea up, I think, a couple weeks ago, and I want to thank President to follow up on it. I think it was the second-best option that we could have made then. And as far as to what Councilwoman Warwick was asking, do we know what the compensation is going to be for Bounce? Is there a price quoted that anybody knows of as to, you know, for her to put this celebration on? I know most of the money is going to go to artists and things of that nature, but I'm just wondering if, like, we have a quote from Bounce?
That's not this bill.
Do you mean Poise or Bounce here?
Oh, I thought we were talking about Bounce.
Nope. It's already done.
Okay. I'm sorry. No further comment.
Thank you. A second round, Councilwoman Gross.
Oh, yeah, Bounce is done.
Thank you. As I mentioned, that we have a letter from the Pennsylvania Association for Nonprofit Organizations, and that it says that arts and other nonprofits can receive ARPA funds as beneficiaries if they were negatively impacted by the pandemic, and that's Treasury Final Rule Overview at page 23, says, quote, "Nonprofits that have faced significant challenges due to the pandemic's increased demand for services and changing operational needs, declines in revenue such as donations or fees, or disproportionate impacts of the nonprofit can be recipients." And it doesn't really restrict the uses of the funds, right? And so it's just to make up for the negative impact that the pandemic created. So all kinds of challenges qualify. Using the funds for payroll, using the funds for rent, mortgage, other operating costs. It's assistance to these nonprofits because of the negative impact of the pandemic. So I think there's wide latitude, and so I have confidence in our budget office, in the Law Department, and OMB to make sure that the uses fit into this very, very large category that is the beneficiary. So, thank you.
Any further second round? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bills 540 and 541, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation on both. That moves us to invoices. There are motion on invoices.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation on both. That moves us to invoices. There are motion on invoices.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Invoices are approved. That moves us on to P-cards. Is there a motion on P-cards?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? I'm going to start sharing with council information that's shared with me about P-cards. Generally, the information, I hadn't flagged it if it hadn't seemed like a worthy of flagging, but in the interest of additional scrutiny and full transparency, I want to make sure, even when I don't see a problem... Sorry, pulling up a window here. Wanted to make sure everyone was seeing what I was seeing here. My apologies. So there, as you'll see on page, I believe on the second page of P-cards, there is one payment that's made through PayPal. It's in Parks and Recreation. It's for 200 youth craft canvas shoes, for six summer City Park City Camp field trips to the Marshall Building or Marshall Mansion. And there is a receipt... There was an invoice that was attached to that for the seller of those. So, wanted to note that. And then the additional flag was under Parks or under Public Works on the last page, you'll see three payments to E.H. Griffith that altogether would exceed $5,000, the $5,000 limit, but we have confirmed that those are indeed separate purchases, and therefore a waiver is not needed. Wanted everyone to be aware. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of P-cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilperson Warwick.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 530, Resolution Providing for a Supplemental Agreement or Agreements with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Department of Transportation for Local Costs Associated with the State Route 0060 Project, excuse me, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $7,590.37, an increase of $1,342.37 from the previously legislated contract authorization.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 530, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Sharlin.
Councilperson Sharlin presents Bill Number 523, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Pittsburgh Community Broadcasting in an Amount Not to Exceed $10,600 for Advertising Related to Fair Housing and Equal Employment Opportunity for the Year of 2024.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 523, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill 525, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning, Article 1, Section 902.03, zoning map by changing from R1AVH residential single unit attached very high-density district to LNC, local neighborhood commercial on property roughly bounded by Hamilton Avenue, Dumfries Line Street, Tioga Street, Sennabar Way, and Zenith Way, all in the Allegheny County Block Online System, 13th Ward.
Motion to send a planning commission for reporting recommendation.
Second. Brief discussion.
Discussion, Councilman Mosley.
Yeah, this project is led by the Young family that lives in Staten Heights, but Mr. Young is a native of Homewood, and it's actually a former church site that's going to be a small office building. It's going to include the offices of Pittsburgh Bike Share, as well as two other tenants that plan to move in and part of Hamilton Avenue that's going to be experiencing a lot of redevelopment over the next couple of years, including the expansion of Alma Illyary, as well as the former Baker's Dairy, that's going to be converted into a lounge and bar and restaurant. So I think, you know, it's going to be really interesting to see how it fits in with all of the expansion and investment that's happening in the Hamilton Avenue corridor. So I look forward to sending this to the planning commission and sharing more, you know, with the public, but I just wanted to, you know, give folks a little bit of flavor, you know, of what this project is.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to send a planning commission, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Will be sent to planning commission for report and recommendation. That moves us to Bill 531.
Bill 531, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with Urban Design Ventures LLC for Services Relating to the Ongoing Technical Assistance and Consulting Related to the Home ARP Program for Total Not to Exceed $120,000.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 531, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Bill 532.
Bill 532, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with Urban Design Ventures LLC for Services Relating to the Administration of the City's Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Solutions Grant, and Housing Opportunity for Persons with Age Hopewood Programs for Sum Not to Exceed $105,000 over three years and for the payment of the cost thereof.
Motion to approve?
Second. Discussion?
Brief discussion. I just... I want to understand, so are we paying a consulting firm to help administer our CDBG funds? Is that what's happening here?
Let's have the manager come up. Is it okay?
You asking me? Yeah.
Kelly Russell, Assistant Director for Community Development. Now, they're helping with the submission of our plans to HUD. We'll still... Our department will still do the work, but they're going to help submit our CAPR, which is our annual report, our annual action plans, which are part of how we're going to use the money going into how we use the money for our program years, and also our five-year plan, which talks about how we'll use the money from 2025 to 2029.
So this consultant is the communication between the city and the federal government, and they help manage that? Is that correct, making sure that we're...
We'll do it on the paperwork.
Right, yeah, exactly. Okay. All right, yeah. I appreciate that. That was really all I had.
Any further discussion? Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, how much... So the funds for the ESG is roughly about $2 million now?
Oh, no. For the preliminary, we got was a little over a million going...
Well, I was close.
Well, yeah. No, I'm sorry, sorry. It was $2 million. I'm sorry, I'm kind of an actual person. But our normal yearly allocation is around... Well, this year, it's about $13.3 million.
Oh, total?
Total.
Okay. So I was off.
Yeah. Well, you said ESG, though. That's why I focused on... ESG is going to be like a little over a million. But the full allocation includes all four funding sources, CDBG, home, hopewood, and ESG.
Yeah, okay.
I got you.
Yep. Now, that would be... Help us to better understand the compliance of everything.
Well, once again, as I was telling him, that UDV is helping with all the submissions of the plans to HUD, the annual action...
Which would keep us in...
Oh, well, yes.
In compliance, that we're always concerned about losing millions of dollars for...
Correct. Yes, sir.
Under several communities. Okay. All right, thanks.
Councilman Mosley.
Yeah, so you would describe urban design ventures roles more like technical assistance?
Yeah, consultant, technical assistance, all type of things. They're very useful for our department. It's a very heavy lift.
Thank you. That was my only question, Madam Chair.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 532, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Thank you. That moves us on to Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services chaired by Councilwoman Kale Smith.
Bill 526, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a financial sponsorship agreement with PNC Bank, Clearview Federal Credit Union, and Citizens Bank for the 2024 City of Pittsburgh Independence Day Festival and City Park Summer Concert Series at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve with discussion?
With discussion, with a second. Councilwoman Kale Smith.
I actually don't have discussion, if anybody else did.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 526, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross.
Bill 524, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with Planet Technologies, Inc. for Microsoft product, training, and support at a cost not to exceed $315,000 over three years.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 524, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Bill 533.
Bill 533, Resolution Further Amending and Submitting Resolution 539 of 2016 as amended entitled, authorizing the Mayor, City Clerk, and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a contract or contract or agreement or agreements with Granicus, Inc. for software upgrades, server hosting services, and annual maintenance of ledger store, agenda management, and video streaming in order to extend the contract an additional 12 months for an additional cost of $51,895.94 for total cost not to exceed $488,802.4.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 533, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Having exhausted our meeting agenda, we now have some meeting announcements. This afternoon at 12:30 PM, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 2024 461 relative to realigning boundaries Central Business District and Crawford Roberts neighborhoods. Speaker registration will close today at 11:00 AM. To register to speak at this meeting, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2133. Also this afternoon, with sessions at 1:30 PM and 2:15 PM, council will hold a briefing on PLI's One-Stop Portal Development Improvements. And at 3:00 PM, council will hold a cablecast post-agenda on a report and recommendation from the Commission on Infrastructure, Asset Reporting, and Investment chaired by me. Next week, council will hold their regular and standing committees meeting on Tuesday... and standing committees meeting on Tuesday, June 11th, and Wednesday, June 12th, at 10:00 AM respectively. Registration ends at 9:00 AM the morning of each meeting. To register to speak at these council meetings, please fill out the sign-up form in its entirety on the council meeting webpage. You may also register by calling the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Anything for members?
Can I just register an abstention for the votes I missed when I was out? Thank you.
So noted, thank you. Any further comment from members?
Uh, just real quickly here, uh, although it wasn't the fire that, uh, was most covered yesterday. Last night, uh, the Belts Hoover School, uh, caught on fire. And I want to thank the firefighters for their quick response, getting to that. Um, for those of you that don't know, we've a major project to put in some senior housing into Belts Hoover. A PHFA program that, um, hopefully could be transformational, uh, there. And it was a real shame, uh, we're almost certain it was arson. Um, and, uh, just want to thank Public Safety for getting there, investigating, um, and note that this has been a priority for the District 3 office for years, uh, was a priority for the previous administration, and this administration has also made it a priority. Uh, and we will not be deterred by this fire, but, um, but it's definitely a step back here. So, uh, want to thank everyone who's involved, and, um, hopefully you'll be hearing more about this soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to register aye votes for, I believe it was the first two bills that I missed.
Thank you, so noted. Councilman Mosley.
I'm sorry, they were executive sessions. So I guess I don't need that.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, send condolences to the family of Valerie Dixon, uh, who recently passed away, who, uh, was a stalwart in the community doing anti-violence work, um, for many, many years. So I just wanted, you know, to send a condolences to her family.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further announcements from members?
You did, you really did. So, you know, on Councilman Charlin's, uh, same, on the same page as what Councilman Charlin was talking about. Our firefighters yesterday at Second Avenue Palm